All right, we just got the all-clear sign. Welcome to the Monday, April 19th, 2021 Salina City Commission Meeting. Before I call the meeting to order, I would like to confirm that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz. Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here. Mayor, if I may interject a point of information for you. I'm preparing for a medical procedure tomorrow, and I may have to step away from the camera here from time to time, but I wanted you to be aware that my hearing devices allow me to hear everything that's being said, and that I'll be here for the votes.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ryan, for letting us know that. With that, we will proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance and followed by a moment of silence. So if you're able, please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll proceed to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, "The Month of April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Salina." Laura Kermer, Community Engagement Coordinator with CAPS of Salina, will read the proclamation.
Whereas we are living in a time when disclosures of sexual abuse and harassment are becoming mainstream, child sexual abuse still lives in secrecy and shame. In Kansas, reports of abuse have increased by 64.97% over the last 20 years, which indicates people are recognizing the signs. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas's families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas, by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. And whereas there were 898 cases of child abuse and neglect investigated by the Department of Children and Families in Celine County alone last year. And whereas Child Advocacy and Parenting Services provides both prevention and intervention programs designed to reduce risk factors associated with child abuse and neglect while focusing on educating parents and empowering children. And whereas, in 2020, the global pandemic brought unique challenges, removing children from their regular interaction of safe, caring adults with increased isolation and, in many cases, increased stress by changing roles and unemployment. CAPS remained operational for the entire year and conducted forensic interviews for 127 child victims of abuse or neglect and/or witnesses to a violent crime. Those victims also received professional advocacy, a medical exam, and care by trained sexual assault nurse examiner on the sexual assault response team, referral to trauma-focused mental health services, and follow-up reports. These services are delivered through a multidisciplinary collaboration between City of Salina and Celine County Law Enforcement, CAPS, Salina Regional Health Center, Department of Children and Families, Child Protective Custody, Celine County Attorney's Office, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and private therapists. And whereas, Child Advocacy and Parenting Services, Inc., began as a child abuse prevention coalition in 1978, the agency has a vision of a place where every child is safe, healthy, and strong. CAPS hopes to shine a light on abuse to create awareness and increase support through the following public events. Go Blue Salina, businesses encouraging employees to wear blue jeans and/or royal blue can collect funds for CAPS and spread awareness by taking photos of employees to show their blue support. Each participant will get a sticker to wear showing they believe every child should be safe and loved. A Pinwheel Parade, families are spreading awareness with pinwheel coloring pages displayed in their windows for all to see as they enjoy the beauty of spring. And Pinwheels for Prevention Challenge, a roaming pinwheel garden that is spread via donations from individuals who wish to send the garden to others to show they believe in creating spaces where every child is safe, healthy, and strong. Therefore, I, Mayor Melissa Hodges, City of Salina, Celine County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourage our citizens to lift up a child's voice.
Thank you very much. How do people find out more information about the Pinwheel Parade and Pinwheels for Prevention and Go Blue Salina? Do you have a place where they can access some more information on that?
Yes, they can visit our website, capsofsalina.org, or they can visit our Facebook page, @capsofsalina.
Awesome, thank you. Do you all have any other events planned for the month?
No, not for this month.
Okay, great. Well, every child should be safe and loved, so thank you for doing your part to promote that. If you'd like to come forward, I've got your signed proclamation.
Item 3.2, "The Month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Salina." Yvonne Montoya, Community Relations Division Supervisor, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, everyone. This proclamation of the City of Salina, whereas the fight for fair housing has been more than 50 years in the making since the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1964, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas our country has progressively identified the protected classes to which we all belong, and the Act protects against discrimination not only based on race, color, religion, and national origin, but in 1974 recognized gender, and in 1988 recognized disability and familial status as protected classes as well. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and policy, but is enforced locally under Chapter 13 of Salina City Ordinance, and the City of Salina is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide equal housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas, we recognize and celebrate the strides that have been made to remove barriers to fair housing, and we recognize that acts of housing discrimination are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness, and that we as a city and nation still have much work to do. Now therefore, I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. Whereas the people of Salina are encouraged to learn more about their rights and responsibilities under the Fair Housing Act, as well as the Kansas Residential Landlord and Tenant Act, as we collectively fight housing discrimination within our community. And witness whereof, I have hereunto sent my hand and caused the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 19th day of April 2021 by the Honorable Mayor of the City of Salina, Melissa Rose Hodges.
Thank you very much, Ms. Montoya. I don't think that we've had the opportunity to meet you yet, so welcome to your new position.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any events planned? Because I think I can think of one, but I'll let you share that.
Well, we have two announcements. The first one is, to commemorate National Fair Housing Month and the 53rd anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, the City of Salina Community Relations Division will hold their annual Fair Housing Seminar on Friday, April 30th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. via Zoom. The purpose of the seminar is to educate tenants, landlords, property managers, lenders, and other interested parties about their rights and responsibilities under the Fair Housing Act. There is no cost for this event, and registration can be completed by going to the city's website, and you'll find a link that will take you to the registration process to register so that you can attend the webinar seminar via Zoom.
Fantastic.
And the second is a new program. The City of Salina Community Relations Division has been awarded nearly $3.1 million to assist Salinans in preventing eviction or regain housing. So in collaboration with the Catholic Charities of Northern Kansas, we will provide Salinan struggling to cover rent and utility payments due to the COVID-19 pandemic could qualify for up to six months of emergency assistance. Salina residents can apply for assistance through the COVID-19 Housing and Rental Assistance Program administered through a partnership between the City of Salina Community Relations Division and Catholic Charities. To apply, Salina tenants should complete the online inquiry on the Catholic Charities of Northern Kansas on their website. There will be a link where they can apply online. They can also contact Catholic Charities of Northern Kansas, or if they need any further information, they can contact the Community Relations Division office.
That's incredible news. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. If you'd like to come forward to get your signed proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Item 3.3, "The Week of April 18th through the 24th, 2021 as National Volunteer Week in the City of Salina." Susan Eberwine, Salina Arts and Humanities Program Assistant, will read the proclamation.
Hi, thank you for letting us do this. I am Susan Eberwine. I have been with the city for a couple of years now, and this year I've been asked to lead our volunteer program with Rosa de la Cruz, so we're both going to read this for you.
All right. Well, as she just mentioned, I am Rosa de la Cruz, Administrative Assistant of the Smoky Hill Museum, and I've been in this position since 2017.
Whereas, National Volunteer Week was established by presidential proclamation in 1974 to recognize and promote the important role volunteers play in creating healthy communities, and is being celebrated April 18th through the 24th, 2021, and?
For us to encourage an environment in which volunteer can flourish, the City of Salina has adopted the goal of continuing a program that promotes community organizations and encourages voluntarism, and?
Whereas, our city government could not function without volunteers who serve on our boards, commissions, task force, and committees, as these volunteers help shape the policies that keep our city moving forward, and their impact can be felt throughout the community, and?
Whereas, the Smoky Hill River Festival relies on 2,000 volunteers to keep the event welcoming and affordable, and the Smoky Hill Museum regular benefits from more than 100 volunteers annually, who provide more than 25,000 in positive economic impact to the City of Salina, and?
Whereas, more than 60 million people volunteer about 8 billion hours annually in America, make an economic impact of $300 billion, and?
Whereas, there are dozens of volunteers in our community who give their time and effort to help others through their church, community organizations, service clubs, school, hospitals, charitable organizations, and other worthy endeavors, and?
Whereas, volunteering can help reduce stress, provide a sense of purpose, increase brain function, strengthen self-confidence, combat depression, teach new professional skills, and provide an opportunity to meet new people and build community.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor, do hereby proclaim April 18th through the 24th, 2021 as a National Volunteer Week in Salina, Kansas. I call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the positive impact that volunteers make in our city, state, and nation, and to encourage greater participation by taking action to share your time and talent in our community and beyond.
Thank you. Does Salina Arts and Humanities have anything special going on for Volunteer Week?
We do. Before I mention that, I would like to mention that this weekend during the Spring Spruce Up, there were 265 volunteers who served our community. Their combined volunteer hours were 922 and 1/2 hours, removing playground equipment, gutted a kitchen, cleared out a basement, painted five porches, built a porch, assembled gardening kits, cleaned up numerous landscaping projects, scraped and painted houses, cleaned trash receptacles, and picked up trash at Lakewood Park along the river and along the North Ohio Overpass. The cleanup resulted in two large roll-offs, one trash truck, four dumpsters, and 24 bags of trash.
Wow, wow.
So we would like to thank the many individual volunteers that donated their time, as well as KWU football and volleyball teams, Salina Heights Christian Church Youth Group, KU nursing and medical students, 4H, Eagle Technologies, the Salina Rescue Mission Leadership Team, and the First Covenant Church. As far as our celebration for this week, in honor of National Volunteer Week, we are posting social media, focusing on the role our volunteers play, and acknowledging the volunteers that serve on the Arts and Humanities Commission and the Community and Art and Design Boards. In summary, we would like to encourage all city departments and the commission to advocate for volunteers and to recognize them.
Absolutely. I mean, that's one of the best things about living in this community, is how selflessly people give of their time and their talents to help others and to make this a better place to live. So thank you so much for recognizing that. I've got your signed proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Before we go on to Citizens Forum, it's become a regular time to get an update on the COVID situation in Salina. So I'll look to Mike Scragg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, these numbers are as of last Friday, and they're in comparison to the Friday prior, so week-over-week numbers. For April 16th, there were 38 new cases compared to 19 the week prior. There were 52 active cases compared to 51. There were 5,978 individuals recovered compared to 5,941, and there were three hospitalizations, which is the same number as the week prior. And total deaths have remained at 108 for the last four weeks.
That's great news. Thank you very much. With that, we will proceed to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any member of the community to speak on any item that's not on today's agenda. So if you would like to speak, I'd ask you to step up to the podium. You will have three minutes, and please keep your mask in place while you're speaking.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Denise Ward. I live here in Salina. I come before you today to once again voice my opposition to the City of Salina imposing a mask mandate that businesses are required to enforce. Eating and drinking establishments are restricted in how we do business with this mandate. The mandate does include an exception for individuals who are seated at a restaurant or other establishment that provides food or beverage service while they are either eating or drinking, because we know you cannot eat through a mask, and no sane adult is going to remove a mask, take a bite, a drink, put it back. The mandate then goes on to state that individuals can be without a mask in these establishments provided they maintain a six-foot distance between individuals, not including individuals who reside together or are seated together with only infrequent or incidental moments of proximity. This part of the mandate limits my business from a capacity of 90 to a capacity of 30, and I am not the only bar or restaurant who is limited in this manner. Many of us have had to turn away customers, not because they're not wearing a mask to enter, but because of the six-foot requirement. We can only accommodate a portion of what we could under normal circumstances. We have customers who are aggrieved because they see empty tables but cannot be seated or sit with their group because of table distance limits. On March 24th, Governor Kelly signed into law 2021 Senate Bill 40 of the Kansas Emergency Management Act. Senate Bill 40 gives citizens at all levels a quick and ready recourse to file an action in district court if any disaster order closes their business, restricts their business, limits their business, restricts their movement, or shuts down religious or other civic institutions. These actions, also known as a grievance, must be heard by the courts within 72 hours, and if no decision is made within seven days, the citizen wins. These cases must be analyzed by the courts using strict constitutional scrutiny. A few weeks ago, when the city attorney said that Senate Bill 40 did not apply to orders issued by the city, he was wrong. Senate Bill 40 applies to all levels of government, and I have verified this with two members of the Kansas House of Representatives, which included the Majority Leader of the House. I have also been provided with a copy of Administrative Order 2021 RL 32, Emergency Rules of Procedure for Hearings under 2021 Senate Bill 40 issued by Marla Luckard, Chief Justice of the Kansas Supreme Court. These emergency rules are written with the understanding that some parties challenging government acts may not be represented by an attorney, and the rules are crafted to help parties complete and deliver their petitions. The order includes template forms to assist us in filing our petition for action, and the form specifically has a box to check for a local unit of government action issued during a state of local emergency. And I have copies of the form if anyone would like to see it, or if anyone is aggrieved, they may have one to file. So in conclusion, I am giving you the opportunity to remove this mandate immediately, and let us get back to business as it should be, or consider this a notice that we shall be using the tools that were given to us by our elected state representatives to preserve our liberties. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ward, would it be possible for you to leave copies with staff?
I sure can.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Kelly Bush, and a resident of Celine County. I reside in the outskirts of this area, but I also work and shop in Salina, mostly shop. I am here to let you know that I'm agreed with the City of Salina mask mandate. 2021 Senate Bill 40 allows citizens who are agreed with mandates put in place due to any disaster order by any level of government to file an action in district court, and it is my intention to file such an action should the mask mandate remain in place. Currently, based upon records and things that have just been spoken of before, we're not under a great emergency with COVID, based upon the number of hospital cases and also the county's removal of the mask mandate, which says a lot in itself. I'm kind of getting tired of having to limit the number of people I invite to a dinner at a restaurant based upon the social distancing restrictions and everything else. I can't have the number of people I want because, as Denise has said, she's had to turn people away. I also believe it's time to quit penalizing businesses and people who frequent these businesses in such a manner. If people need a mask, let them decide. I do and wear it when needed. I've also been vaccinated, and as have many other Celine County residents. Let's get over this and move on with our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Hi, my name is Rachel Davis, and I actually live in Lincoln County. I operate a business here, and I've from this area all my life, and it's been very difficult with staffing, to staff, because they can't make the kind of money they need to make with the restrictions on the tables. Therefore, I lose staff because they can't make the money they need to pay their bills. I'm aggrieved with the limitations that the city mask mandate places in our industry, and for a year now, we've been operating at reduced capacities due to social distancing rules. The state of Kansas and Celine County have now removed our limitations, yet the City of Salina continues to keep them in place with no clear end in sight, besides the promise to revisit the issue. Revisiting the issue doesn't give us an end date. Therefore, it's my intention to file a grievance in district court as allowed by 2021 Senate Bill 40, should the mandate remain in force. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis.
Dalton, City of Salina. Last week and this week, how can you run a city council meeting? I thought you're legally supposed to have an odd number, so there is no ties, or the mayor does not vote. But I do believe that you guys need to revisit making a mayor an elected official, not just give it to another city commissioner next year. I think it should be voted on by the people. And instead of having everybody live up in the hill or out south, why don't you split it like in districts or whatever you want to call them? Because it's ridiculous that there's an elite group running this town. And it's also ridiculous that you bring the mask law up last week, knowing that you two would vote no to it, and now you want to wait till the end of May? I see everybody that files against the city winning, and I see the city losing a bunch of money for him to protect you because of you two.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell.
Norman Mantle, Celine County. This is in the public newspaper. Do you really want to take the COVID-19 shot? You need to watch the video "Shot in the Dark" with Dr. Sherry Tenpenny on YouTube. That vaccine has been proven to not be effective as we hoped it would be. People are still getting this virus after they've had shots. So I would ask you again to watch "Shot in the Dark" by Dr. Sherry Tenpenny on YouTube.
Thank you, Mr. Mantle. And I would just note that no matter what vaccine you get for any particular illness, the efficacy rate is never 100, and I believe that these vaccinations have an efficacy rate of about 90 to 95%. So at any rate, that's something to keep in mind. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Brian Frazier, City of Salina, 512 South 8th. I am in support of the mask mandate. Thank you for voting yes, because masks not only protect me, but it protects those folks that are vulnerable, and that's what we have to look at. I empathize with those businesses that are struggling, because no one wants to see businesses struggle, but we also have to take care of each other. And if it's a little inconvenience right now, it's a lot better than the inconvenience that could happen if you do get seriously ill. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chad Farver here in Salina. First of all, I'd like to say our thoughts and prayers are with Commissioner Franz, and we pray for a speedy recovery for Commissioner Franz.
Thank you.
I've heard several people today mention Senate Bill 40, and the word that keeps coming up is the word aggrieved. And so I used my phone. And so I took a, I used my phone, I know I'm not supposed to do that in here, but I looked up the dictionary definition. Aggrieved means pained, afflicted, or civilly or politically oppressed. And as you can hear from several people who have already come up and spoken to you, they are feeling civilly and politically oppressed, I think is the biggest part of that. And in reference to Mr. Wood, I think last week mentioned this, the May 1st date and how they could file aggrevances against the city and different things like that, you're hearing today that that wording is already in Senate Bill 40. And the warning that I would give to the city, like we did to the county, is this could cost the city money once these aggrevances are filed in district court. The process is that it has to be heard within three days and a decision within seven days. So you're going to see immediate reaction from these who have already stated they're going to file a grievance against that. As far as the mask mandate goes, we all know it's irrelevant. We all know that it is not helping. Texas and Mississippi have dropped their mask mandates, as has Kansas, by the way, but cases continue to drop in Texas and Mississippi. Dr. Fauci was asked about that. He said, "I can't explain it. I don't understand why." The problem is that masks are not the number-one tool to fight this virus, and the citizens know what they should do. This edict that you guys have put out, and I appreciate Mr. Hoppick, the way he put it last week, has fulfilled its purpose. The curve has been flattened. Some would argue that the curve is decreasing now as opposed to going up. Hospitalizations, we are nowhere near maxed out with our hospitals, and it's time to let go of this mandate. Citizens have been caused, law-abiding citizens have been caused to disregard this ordinance of the city because it violates their decision for their health. And I think it's a bad precedent for the city commission, a governing board, to set where you determine health decisions for the citizens of a city. I think that's a very bad precedent to put into place. I will not encourage, like Maxine Waters has done over the last couple of days, to, I will not encourage citizens to burn buildings or loot stores, et cetera, but I will encourage today, Salina, stand up against the government overreach of this mask mandate ordinance. Stand up for your freedoms. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farver. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? And it doesn't need to be on masks. It can be on anything. Are there any participants online, Mr. Wood, that have raised their hand? If you're online, give a wave or wave your virtual hand, and we can recognize you and get you unmuted.
I don't see any at this time, Ms. Hodges.
All right. Thank you very much. And I do have the deepest sympathy for the business owners that are struggling through this, through all the impacts that COVID had made on us. I would like to note that we have had our first lawsuit related to Senate Bill 40 filed, and there was a hearing on Friday, and the result of that was that the case was dismissed. Now, I know that each one of you has your own individual set of circumstances, but just, you know, at this point, we are prepared to address those as they come. And at this point, our present plan of action is to revisit this, and I don't have my calendar in front of me. Was that May?
24th.
May 24th, or upon the return of Commissioner Franz? And I think that that's going to be the plan. So in absence of that, that's where things stand. But I do want to thank you for coming down here and for sharing how this has impacted you. And anyway, thanks for your attendance today. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that a Commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I would ask that we remove 6.2, please.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right. And I'm sorry, I totally preempted our new clerk. Sorry about that.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 12, 2021. Item 6.3, approve change order number 2 for the Markley Magnolia Sewer System Improvements Project Number 08-2713, Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund. Item 6.4, award the bid for project number 21007, 2021 Brick Street Rehab to Bryant and Bryant Construction, Inc. of Halsted, Kansas, in the amount of $104,595.50, with a $5,229.78 construction contingency, for total project authorization not to exceed $109,825.28, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Bryant and Bryant Construction, Inc. of Halsted, Kansas.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4?
Mayor.
Mayor, Commissioner Ryan here. I'll move to approve those items on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. And that motion passes 4-0, and we will return to item 6.2.
Item 6.2, authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with Fox Lawn and Landscape LLC for City of Salina mowing services in the amount of $97,873.
Thank you. Mr. Toich.
Mr. Toich, thank you very much. Just had a couple of questions. When I was comparing the bids, it's kind of that old saying, if it looks too good to be true, maybe it is. And when I saw that Fox Lawn and Landscaping was less than half of the other two, it kind of threw up a red flag. So.
Sure.
Can I ask what our bid was last year and who the prior contract was with?
The last two contracts were with Fox Lawn and Landscape. I compared the elements of the previous contract with the current proposal for those areas that matched up. There was a difference of four locations, so from the old contract to the new contract, we've added locations, and the total difference in price was just over $4,000. In and of itself, that would be a 9% increase, except those four locations make up about $3,600 of that $4,000. So in effect, the difference between the old contract, the last three-year contract, and the current proposed contract is right around 1%. I don't know if that answers your question.
So basically.
It's increased by 1%.
Okay. Gotcha.
And to follow up on that, then, as far as monitoring and everything, we were satisfied with the service we've received, obviously, from Fox Landscaping in the past?
The short answer is yes, and I would say it this way. This company has had the last two contracts, they've had it for six years now. I was fortunate enough to be here the six years prior, and I would tell you that any company who does this work is going to have issues, simply because the number of locations, the other things that can impact the performance of the contractor that are out of control of the contractor, such as weather conditions. And I would say that regardless of the contractor performing the work, it requires our supervisors to ensure that they are monitoring the areas. But in terms of his performance, we found him to be extraordinarily responsive. Something that we're doing on this contract, from a recommendation by the city manager, is we are actually assigning priorities to where we would like for him to apply remedy first, if weather conditions or something else causes us to be delayed. So we will not only have a general priority list, which is, we want the medians, then the arterial row, then residential, then the collector streets, and then ponds, in that order, but each of the zones will be prioritized by specific location. And assuming that we award this contract, then we will get with Dan Fox, and we'll present those priorities to him. In the past contracts, he's worked exclusively with the street superintendent. This time, we are adding zones that will add additional city manager designees. But as long as those designees are proactive with their areas, then I believe that this contractor will be as responsive and responsible as he has been for the last six years.
Well, it makes me feel much better knowing that Mr. Fox and his company have done this in the past, and not to question his company, it was just the pricing that had me taken back, which I'm ecstatic about. And also, I've never heard a negative comment about his company, and I wanted to make that aware also. So unless there's any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Toich.
Thank you.
Is there any comment from the public? If not, I will bring it back.
So I've actually been in this industry, and I know more about it. My recommendation, Fox is decent. It is way too much to give just to one company. Wichita had the same issue, and now they've split it up into zones, and I believe it would be better to not give it to one company. And Fox has some history that I'm not going to get into, but I would go, when I seen that price, I thought the same as what Commissioner Hoppick thought, way too cheap. Because to do something like, to do all those, you're going to have over $100,000 just in equipment alone.
Thank you.
Commissioners, as a clarification, we did solicit competitive requests for proposals. It was divided into four zones. The bidders had the opportunity to bid selected zones or all zones, and it turns out that Fox Lawn and Landscape was the low bidder on all four zones.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Skryg. With that, we'll bring it back to the Commission for further discussion or action.
And knowing that city staff is aware of our concerns and will be monitoring the job, I would move to approve authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with Fox Lawn and Landscape LLC for the City of Salina mowing services in the amount of $97,873, with an annual cost of living adjustment not to exceed 3%, and add new mowing locations as necessary to properly maintain city areas of responsibility.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute a three-year agreement with Fox Lawn and Landscaping LLC. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 4-0, which will bring us to item 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorize the city manager to execute a Fourth Amendment to the transferee agreement with Salina Educational Automotive Museum of America, Inc.
All right. Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. And going to change things around here and start with the last page of my staff report, which is Exhibit A1, Waterline Relocation Work. Give you a chance to get to that photo, because it'll help you understand as we talk forward. But basically, there's an existing 12-inch water main that was installed in 1923, and it's located under the existing north portion of the Salina Educational Automotive Museum of America, or the SEMA building, and also under the railroad right-of-way. And if you've driven down 4th Street, you'll notice that the railroad is very close to the east face of the building in tight quarters. But abandonment of this portion of the 1923 water line is necessary to avoid any costly repairs to the SEMA building and the railroad tracks in the event of a water main break in the future. I think you probably all saw the street out front when the 12-inch water main broke there. It can take out a large area. Two options were evaluated to relocate the water line. Each option included abandoning the existing 1923 water line under the existing north portion of the building in the right-of-way. The first option that we started down the road with was to install a steel sleeve with the water line under the railroad right-of-way in the general location of where the new building addition was going to be added, or over the parking lot, which allowed us to install a steel sleeve under the new building and install the pipe in it, and in the lieu of a water main break, the building would be protected. We worked with the railroad several passes. Ultimately, we got a plan approved, but there was enough requirements that it made it very, very, very costly. And so we went back to talk with Mr. Pestinger and his representatives about the overall cost of the project, and determined, maybe it made sense, that the portion under the building would be dealt with by the SEMA owners, and out in 4th Street and in the right-of-way would be a city cost. So the second option we looked at was to install a new water line in the alley west of the building from Iron Avenue to Walnut Street. That, we developed a bid cost of $175,650, and we ultimately compared that back to the city's share of the cost for the work in the railroad right-of-way and 4th Street of $150,000. In talking with the SEMA representatives, they felt that it was in their best interest to be able to move forward quicker with the project if they did not have to deal with the railroad and deal with building a sleeve and piping under their building. So as a result of that, kind of going back in time, the city had entered into a transfer agreement with Salina 2020 and SEMA, and that same type of agreement was used for other projects, such as Homewood Suites, the Alley, and Old Chicago. The attached Fourth Amendment allows SEMA to construct the new 12-inch water line in the alley, continue on with the work in their building, and make the connections, and from that, the city would reimburse them $150,000, and that would be funded from the Utility Reserve Fund. And this is not uncommon. The utility relocation costs for Homewood Suites and the Alley was funded through the Utilities Department at roughly $225,000, and then the Salina Field House was completed by the Utility Department funds at a cost of about $725,000. Staff has identified the standard slate of options. Option 1, authorize the city manager to execute the Fourth Amendment, authorize the execution with amendments, or postpone, or vote to deny. Staff recommends option 1. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Tasker?
Where does the current water line run? I know where the one's coming through the building, but where is the current water line? Is it in 4th Street?
It runs up from the south in 4th Street. I don't know if you can follow it on that tiny map. And then it crosses under the railroad, under the building slab, then back down a portion of the alley to Iron. Up 4th Street, cross the railroad, then down the alley.
So will this water line replace that water line that's currently being used under 4th Street?
It will not replace the entire line, just the north portion of it. The south portion will remain in place, have a fire hydrant at the end, and ultimately, when we design the Friends of the River improvement in that area, we'll adjust that water main and connect it on at the appropriate location. There just wasn't enough space to try to go to the north, and also, many of the buildings on 5th Street are connected in the alley to that existing water line down the alley. So we looked at numerous options, and this is kind of where we ended up with the best option for us and the with the best option for us in the future for maintenance and protecting the building and the railroad.
Personally, I like this better. I would think a water line running down 4th Street with the railroad where it's at could cause some significant issues down the road.
That it sure can.
Had to deal with the railroad, so.
Right. So it was, it didn't hurt my feelings to move it into the alley. It's a lot easier to maintain. And if you ever work in the railroad right-of-way, it takes a lot of effort to get it done from their inspections and so on. So didn't really want to make any plans to put it down 4th Street until we get the river renewal completed and see what that really means and make sense at the end.
Any other questions for Ms. Tasker?
Nope.
I see that the applicant is here, or representative for the applicant. I don't know if you want to speak, Mr. Pestinger. It's certainly not necessary unless you'd like to. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak on this item? Anyone online who would like to? No? All right. Well, then I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a fourth amendment to the transferee agreement with Salina Educational Automotive Museum of America, Incorporated.
Second.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute a fourth amendment to the transferee agreement with Salina Educational Automotive Museum of America, Inc. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. And that motion passes 4-0. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, first reading of ordinance number 21-11057, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement between the City of Salina, Kansas and the State of Kansas for the purpose of financing improvements to the wastewater treatment plant.
All right, Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. The improvements to meet the nutrient removal at the wastewater treatment plant are required by our current wastewater discharge permit. And the intent is for it to be financed by a low-interest loan with the State of Kansas that's administered by KDHE. The loan amount is $31.5 million, and we have, I think, a wonderful interest rate of 1.3%. And first semi-annual payment is due in 2023, and the final payment's due in 2042. It's a 20-year payout. The annual payment is approximately $1.8 million, and that's included in our water and wastewater rate projections. We analyze those water and wastewater rates annually, and that's basically to ensure that we meet all of our obligations, including our $5 million target fund balance. In addition, the Utility Reserve Fund has a balance of $10 million. And out of that, we propose to spend $7 million on replacement of 30-year-old equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. These equipment costs are in addition to the improvements that we're making in the loan agreement for nutrient removal. We didn't include any equipment costs in our original plans and had been just monitoring and holding on to our funds to be prepared for this project when we get to this point. We're currently completing a basis of design report that will define what we'll do for the nutrient removal and make us a list of equipment that we need to replace that we can be sure is going to be in play for the next 20 years with the treatment plant upgrade. So we haven't quite finished that. Should be about the first of May, and then we'll be presenting that to the KDHE. And then, once we get their approval, we'll be back to present it to the City Commission and give you an idea of the big picture for the wastewater plant improvements. With that, standard slate of options. Approve the ordinance. Approve the ordinance with amendments. Could postpone. This one's unique. You could approve the ordinance on first reading and have some amendments at the time of the second reading, or you could vote to deny. Staff recommends option one. This time, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Tasker. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. The only question I had is in regard to any federal funding that we may be so lucky to receive, whether that's through the American Rescue Plan or a new infrastructure plan. I saw that it is a possibility,